Good evening. It's approximately 7:01, and I'd like to call the May 16, 2018, board meeting to order, and remind everyone to please use your microphone when speaking and turn them off when finished. I'm the worst offender of that, I think. So we are in order. All five commissioners are present, and we will begin with reports by the chief executive officer and management staff.
Thank you very much, President Burke. Good evening, commissioners. We will start the meeting as we do every month with a safety minute, and this month Joel Carey is going to provide the safety minute. Joel is our Water Resources Division Manager. Take it away, Joel.
Good evening, commissioners. President Burke, so you may ask, why are we doing poison oak safety this month? Well, not only is it the time of year for this, one of your fellow TBWD employees contracted poison oak, so I thought it was a very timely way to talk about poison oak right now, and I can assure you it does itch, so I'm doing my best not to itch. So, poison oak safety. So here's a very handy rhyme to remember. I hope this will help guide you in what to look for out in the field. Leaves of three let it be. If it's hairy, it's a berry. If it's shiny, watch your heiny. So, that's a very good way to remember it, if the laser pointer works here. So, I actually witnessed this type of growth, just, this is kind of how I contracted it. It's very green and not nearly as shiny as the more established or exposed growth. This is something we noticed when we were out looking at some of the sites that we saw it at. Again, just remember how little it takes to get poison oak. The oily resin only takes a little bit of contact with your skin. It is the leaves, the stems, and even the roots that are actually still can cause poison oak or cause the reaction. So, keep that in mind. Obviously, you don't want to do anything like burn it or mow over it as well. That's not a, that's not an ideal way to go about it. When in the field, wear as much protective clothing as you can. That will help prevent exposure, hiking, biking, or clearing brush, anything of that nature. And again, it takes a very small amount to get that type of reaction. And, what about if it's too late? What do you do now? Well, remember to wash your exposed area, your pets, if possible, if they've been out hiking with you and they were exposed to it as well. Typically, pets don't have the same reaction, but they can, but most commonly, it's the fact they get the oil on their skin as well, and then you go to hug your loved pet, and sure enough, you get poison oak again. And your clothing, wash as soon as possible. Symptoms may take several days to occur. Typically, an over counter topical treatment, like calamine lotion, is one option that would work. And if there's any type of swelling, extreme rash, or troubled breathing, you should seek medical advice. So, that's our safety moment. Please be aware of poison oak when we're out exploring the wonderful woods of Oregon this summer.
Thank you. I understand that's a real consideration for firefighters.
The fire exposure?
I was going to say that.
Oh, okay.
I was in the Forest Service. You don't want to get near the smoke, because it'll permeate through your clothes, and you can also get poison ivy or poison oak smoke in your bronchial passages, which causes doctor's fits. So stay away from the smoke, too.
Yeah, I think some individuals have quite a reaction, too, so just be aware of that if you're one of those individuals.
I have one question. If you get exposed to it and symptoms are expressed, how long do they generally last?
Well, so far... (laughter) I'm going on about, hmm, let's see, 10 to 11 days.
Oh, my, so it's pretty persistent.
Yeah, it's not, it's not too terribly severe, so I was lucky enough, I actually did follow those procedures. I washed within 30 minutes, I think, which helped quite a bit.
Kind of like the allergies everybody has, only 10 times worse.
Yeah. So I think each person's different, so sometimes people get the reaction right away, sometimes it takes longer. So I'm going on, yeah, about that amount of time. I'll let you know when it's stopped.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Does anybody else have any questions?
Actually, I have one. I didn't understand the hairy berry part. Does that mean if it's hairy, it's a berry, it's not poison oak?
Typically...
It's just if it's three leaves and fresh growth or shiny, that's bad?
Yeah, because a blackberry, like a blackberry, Himalayan blackberry, looks fairly similar to that. It has a somewhat of a similar pattern with the way that the leaves are connected, but you can see that fine microfiber fuzz on it, which is indicative. In fact, we were just out today looking at an area we knew of, adjacent to the site where I got it, and you could see the blackberry bushes, brambles, growing with the poison oak. You could see the similarity right next to each other, but obviously, that's one of the key indicators. It's that fuzzy sort of hairy look to the leaves.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
No, we'll get into the substance of the, the management report now, if that's all right.
Okay, it's okay with me. Take it away, Mark. Thank you, Joel.
Okay, so, a couple of quick announcements related to awards. So, two weeks ago, the district received two communication awards from the Pacific Northwest section of the American Water Works Association. One award was for communications related to training on water storage and emergency kit preparedness that was done as part of National Preparedness Month last fall. And the other award was for community outreach related to our Grabhorn Reservoir Replacement Project. Also, last week, we learned that TBWD received an award from the Government Finance Officers' Association, or GFOA. Commissioner Bagnall is undoubtedly very familiar with this, because this is actually the 28th consecutive year that we've received this GFOA, GFOA Award, or Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the District's Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, or CAFR. So I'd like to specifically acknowledge the district's finance and accounting team, with special thanks to Bob Shields and Rena Burney for their efforts in preparing the CAFR. And we will actually do a formal presentation to the board of the award itself as part of the audit report this fall, probably. Perfect, thank you. I wanted to invite the board to a special event. The Vision Action Network is having their annual celebration coming up. As you know, TBWD is a sponsor of the Washington County Vision Action Network, and on the evening of June 25, from 5:00 to 7:00, at the Rock Creek Campus of Portland Community College, Van will be holding their annual celebration. I think it's important that we have some commissioners present. I believe Commissioner Schmidt has already acknowledged that he will attend. Last year, Commissioner Duggan attended. Van provides a really critical resource for folks in need and underrepresented parts of our community, and, and I think the piece that's very exciting to me is that Andrea, as part of our communications team, is now looking for opportunities to partner with Van to be able to access and connect with these parts of our community. So I think it's a real step forward, and I look forward to supporting Van and being part of their celebration. Let me know if you're interested, and we'll get you signed up.
Absolutely. I'd love to be involved.
Very good. We will make that happen. And then, last but not least, you know, typically, we always have a department report. Well, this month, we actually have a fairly light business agenda, and so I've actually scheduled two department reports this evening, and so Joel Carey is going to provide the first department report, talking about a large main break we had a couple of weeks ago.
Okay.
Good evening again, commissioners. So, this happened almost two Fridays ago, when we were a Friday shift for those of us. So just as a quick, quick little bit of background, water resource teams involved typically in these, these situations, because we're the regulatory compliance component, so obviously, we're part of our operations and engineering group as well, but that's really the main role that we typically play. So, we were here and engaged in this process when the leak began, and so this presentation will kind of cover that leak, the timeline of events, and what our staff, how our operations and overall staff responded to the situation. So, briefly, the background information, I think, that's really important to note about this, that because of the Grabhorn Reservoir Replacement Project, the district has been operating our two, our two large hydraulic zones in a different capacity. So that's the 385, this is the 435. Typically, with Grabhorn Reservoir down here, we have a series of regulators along this pressure boundary that help, that help provide additional flow into that zone. Because Grabhorn Reservoir is offline, these regulators that sit along this boundary are acting in a different manner. They're essentially being controlled by the pressure. Pressure's the primary control factor, not the reservoir level, since it is now currently offline. So that's important to note in the, in the incident of this leak, because it was a big factor as to why our staff were prepared for this event. I assume this is a better pointer. Much better. So, the leak occurred up here, this is the, this is the northwest section of the district. It occurred at Century Boulevard just south of west, south of Northwest West Union Road. This is a primarily a commercial area of the district. We don't have typically no residential customers. It's a lot of large facilities, as we'll talk about in a minute here, but this is where the leak occurred, which, which began that Friday morning about 7:00 to 8:00 a.m. So, as we talked about, on May 4, the callous for this was that there was some work being done by developer. After they began their work connecting to a 12-inch stub, within about 24 hours, we realized that that, that stub essentially had come loose at the site that they were working and excavating, causing, causing the substantial mainline leak. As you can imagine, a 12-inch line has the capacity to push quite a bit of water out of it. So at 8:00 a.m., staff began receiving low-pressure calls from two of the facilities adjacent to the leak site. That would be Beaverton, Beaverton Foods and Research Fine Foods. All this, again, started happening fairly quickly. By 8:05 a, 8:05, 8:00, excuse me, 8:05 a.m., operations became aware of the increase in system demand. Through SCADA, they were monitoring the flow through some of those regulators. It became quite obvious that we had a significant increase in flow through those regulators because of that leak. So these two things more or less happened simultaneously on that morning. So by 8:30 a.m., staff were onsite determining the next steps possible. We deployed operations folks very quickly to the site. They were determining our next steps, communicating with both facilities and the developer, and taking the first corrective steps to control the leak. During that time, you know, internally within the building, we were setting up our ad hoc ICS team to make sure we, we were preparing accordingly. You know, that's the role that, that our group typically plays, is looking at the regulatory component of that, low pressure, what does that mean? Do we have to issue some kind of notice? So again, you know, we were all hands on deck at this point, determining what was going on. So if you look at these pictures here, we'll have a couple more pictures after this, but that's the location of the leak. You can see the amount of water coming out of that 12-inch, the connection there where the stub came off at the, at the connection. That right there is Beaverton Foods. This is looking south from, looking south from West Union Road. So by 9:30 a.m., within that hour, our staff had, our staff had been responding onsite. We were slowly bringing the system back down to normal operating conditions. That was a combination of both controlling, controlling flow at the leak and adjusting our pressure regulating valves. That was probably the most critical factor happening during this time. We had to very slowly control the flow through one of our largest PRVs, which is that 185th and West Union. That, the flow through that had increased several, severalfold, which was dumping quite a bit of water from the 435 zone into the 385. We had staff at that, at that vault in there, taking about 20 minutes to slowly throttle down the flow through that valve to make sure we didn't causing additional problems in the system. During this time, field staff onsite were also communicating with the developer and Beaverton Foods and Research Fine Foods about the situation. They were providing the numbers for the ICS team internally within the building. We became engaged and then coordinated with our facilities managers, trying to discuss what kind of pressure they were seeing within the building. Ultimately, we determined there was no loss of pressure fully. As you know, that's kind of the dividing line, between when, when we decide that a boil water notice is required or not. We vetted that issue very carefully with our staff and their facilities managers to make sure that we didn't see, see any indication that it went to a complete loss of pressure in the area. I highlight that a lot, because it really, it was really a kudos to our operations folks for getting the system set up appropriately in light of not having Grabhorn Reservoir online, that the system did exactly what it was supposed to do during this time. By 10:30 a.m., we were already making repairs underway. The leak was fully isolated. This is, that's the actual repair site right there. That's where the valving, the 12-inch stub and the valving blew off. Again, by 10:30 a.m., we were effectively sort of ramping down the situation. Staff were preparing to make the repairs. We had some additional measures taken while we were out there, including our staff flushing the service line for research off, to make sure we dislodged any accumulated sediment in their lines for their food production. And our staff went out to collect several water quality samples in the area, including some special, some special samples collected from the facilities themselves. We figured, given the criticality of these customers, we wanted to take some due diligence out there in, in advance of having to do the repair work. So, in conclusion, right now, we're continuing to follow up with, with the developer and impacted customers. We are currently communicating with them about any potential issues moving forward. Our risk management staff are engaged with that process right now. All the water quality samples we collected were confirmed negative for coliform bacteria. That included the initial samples we took that Friday morning, and we took additional samples after the repair was made, and the following week as well. So there was actually an abundance of water quality sampling done in the area, just to really, again, confirm that we didn't have any concerns about the event as well. We established a job number to capture the cost in the event that we are, we are discussing with our risk management staff, steps moving forward. And as always, at the district, we're reviewing any lessons learned from this event. One thing we've done so far, just communicating with our customer service staff, who are kind of our frontline defenders on this, in these type of situations, making sure we understand the drivers behind low-pressure events, you know, why we collect that information from customers, and just the importance of being very accurate about that process. So, again, every time we do this, it's a lesson, it's a lesson learned how we can refine the process. As, as much as we know, we don't want to be in these situations, they do happen sometimes outside of the district's control, so the better prepared we are, the better we'll be able to respond next time to these events. And, again, I put this together in this sort of format to show that within the span of essentially two and a half hours, we had responded, had it under control, had mitigated the situation, and were able to restore water service at the facilities fully and completely. So that concludes my department report. Happy to take any questions now.
Are there any questions for Joel?
What caused the valve to become loose?
So there was a saddle block on it. When the, when the developer excavated it, they removed some of the restraint from the soil, obviously, and that saddle block, that was actually at that valve, which, I'm going to go back here, which was sitting right there. When they excavated that site, again, they removed some of the restraint from around the area, and it actually blew loose. So that's one thing we're discussing right now with the developer, obviously. There was some, there was instructions by staff to make sure that they looked for additional thrust restraint before they fully excavated. So, we are in discussions right now about the exact cause behind that. Yes?
Anything else for Joel? Thank you very much.
Welcome.
And, and as promised, the, the double feature this evening. So Dave Crasco is going to provide a brief update related to the water supply program, and an issue that's near and dear to us in terms of the cost of steel.
Okay, and thank you very much, and I want to apologize to my fellow commissioners, staff, and viewers for my sneezing and wheezing. The tree pollen is out to get me, and it's doing a pretty good job.
We appreciate you hanging on.
Yeah, hanging on. So, Mr. Crasco, we can't wait to hear what you have to say.
Okay, I'll try to keep this brief. Good evening, and so a very brief staff report here today, just about the steel tariff. And starting off with, back on March 8 of this year, the president signed an order to enact a tariff on imported steel of 25%. And this obviously affects everything on the program. Pretty much, we have steel in all shapes and sizes and every component of the, of the program listed here. And so what we had to do in order to figure out the impact is first calculate the mass of steel that, that is occurring on all these elements of the program, and then apply the tariff to the cost of materials. And so when we take a look at that, what are the types? There's three main types of steel used on the, on the program. Hot rolled coil, so that's the material that's used for forming our 66-inch diameter and smaller diameter steel pipes. A rebar, obviously for reinforcing concrete structures, and steel plate for use of various forms, fittings, brackets, things of that nature. Then, once we had that figured out, then we applied the 25% tariff to the prices for that. We have the prices that are, that are regularly published, shown here. The, the values we use were from March 26 of this year, and so you can see how the, how the change. Hot rolled coils, hot rolled, HRC steel. Uh, yeah, thank you. Yeah, the price, the price at the time of this estimate was $825 a ton, so that went to $1,031 a ton. Rebar from $706 a ton to $883 a ton, and then steel plate from 924 to 1,155. And tariff per ton, correct. Tariff exemptions and other market forces are not considered, so this analysis is just of the tariff, what's, what impact it has on the overall program. This chart here lists off the tonnage of, of all the different parts of the program. So the first list there is on the unbid pipelines. So as you know, we have a few projects already under construction, 124th, Kinsman, South Hillsborough, so obviously, those projects aren't affected by this. But all the remaining pipelines that we have to build, we have about 17,740 tons of steel used there, and you can see the, the estimated tariff impact is about 3.7 million. And then going down the list there, we have steel tonnage, or steel in the treatment plant, in the raw water facilities, in the reservoir, for an all total, total for all facilities, and then the total impact for all of this is about 4.7 million. So that means program-wide, for everything that we're going to be building on the program, the 25% increase in total costs amounts to about $4.7 million. So, that's listed again here, and it's good to remember that our program cost estimates include some contingency for uncertainties. And the steel tariffs, though they have a cost impact, they're not expected to impact the overall program cost. Basically, what we're saying here is that this 4.7 million, we believe, is going to be captured by the contingencies that were carried in the various estimates of all the program elements.
And, and sorry to interrupt you, but I saw on the graph that waivers to the tariffs are not factored in, so that could be something that is a positive impact or could negate some of the increases.
Absolutely. There, the, we're, this is a pretty simplistic analysis. It basically just takes, figures out the total mass of steel that we have, what does it cost, how do you add 25% to it? So basically, we're trying to get our arms around what's the risk to the, to the overall program estimates.
And then one other question I have is about buying futures. I know sometimes with large construction projects, people building the project will buy a bunch of steel in advance, pre-buy it, and I know that we've done that with some of it, or have we?
We have not done that yet on the program. We are evaluating opportunities to do that. We don't believe right now would be a, a good opportunity to do that. We think it's, the steel prices are kind of at a high right now, so, yeah, we'll just buy it as we need it. But if there's a dip in the market coming, we're going to be monitoring for that, and we'll, we'll present that opportunity to the decision-makers to, to take advantage of it when we can.
Dave, does the 25% increase make U.S. steel competitive with the foreign steel? Is that the genesis of 25, or was it just a number pulled out of a hat? Or do you know?
So, how did the president come to picking 25%?
Right.
The steel tariff? I'll, I'll have to say I don't know.
I'll ask Stormy Daniels.
Thank you, yes. I'll pass.
You can ask her tomorrow night, she'll be in town.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right.
Dave, can we get, how much steel can we get locally? I mean, within the U.S. that we don't, that's not going to worry about the tariff. However, steel will increase, I understand domestically-produced steel will increase also, but it would add up to 25%?
So, Commissioner Schmidt, I'll try to answer your question here. So, I'll, I'll say that all of the steel that we have on the program to date, so for Kinsman Road, for 124th Avenue, and for the South Hillsborough project, is all domestic steel, and it's all processed. That's the hot rolled coil steel purchased and processed at, at, in North Portland at Northwest Pipe. And so, so far, we've been able to do everything with domestic steel. And the, but, you know, it's a, it's a, it has been a global market, and as we ramp up on the program, as we're building more things in more areas at the same time, we'll have to evaluate whether the local market for domestic steel can, can provide what's needed, or if we have to, if we have to reach outside of domestic markets. And it is, I think you're also bringing up another point, that if, that if there's, if this increases demand on domestic steel, that we, supply and demand being what it is, we might see a rise in price in domestic steel as well. And so, it's, but, all of these things, we have to continue to track and monitor on the program to, to again assess our risks and see if this really, really impacts our overall costs.
But in brief, anything could happen or nothing could happen.
Good way of summarizing, correct.
It'd be a good way to, it'd be interesting to see how that falls.
Yep.
Yeah.
Just clicking through the rest of the presentation here. So I think this kind of summarizes it as well. There's a lot of things that could, could take place here, tariff exemptions, other sort of market impacts that could change all of this, and it's really not known how, how exporter responses are going to affect the overall costs, and we're going to continue to monitor this going forward. And are there any other questions I can answer?
I just want to say how impressed I am that staff looks so far into the future with, at so many dimensions of what can happen in a project like this. And so I want to thank you for your good work, and your best attempt to look into a very cloudy crystal ball.
Yeah, mine, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would simply reiterate that comment in terms of the great work that the program's doing, and, and Dave had summarized it nicely. As we've talked previously, so much of this program is all about managing risks. And to manage those risks, we have to identify and understand those risks, and so this is a, a part of that effort, is to, when we heard the word that the tariff was going to be imposed, well, what might it mean to us? And, and what are our options in terms of how we might respond? And, and we, we aren't going to know until it's all done in terms of what the ultimate impact was, but we can at least begin to understand and appreciate what we might do differently, or how we can plan for it accordingly. So, if there are no other questions, that concludes the management staff report this evening.
Are there any other questions? Okay, then the report is indeed concluded. Thank you very much, Mr. CEO, and we'll go on to the next item of our agenda, which is Commissioner Communications, Reports of Meetings Attended, and Topics to Be Raised by the Commissioners. I'll start with the esteemed Commissioner Duggan and rotate around.
Not an extensive list that I have, have for this last month. On April 25, I had an extended discussion with the city councillor from the city of Troutdale about joining the Regional Water Providers Consortium. His name, David Rimka. Unfortunately, I guess my arguments and reasoning for them to join wasn't successful with David, but overall, the city council did vote, just on May 8, to join the Regional Water Providers Consortium. So Troutdale is, is joining. However, David was one of the two no votes, and I, I hope that my discussion didn't really create a negative vote. I think it was other issues, but it was a good discussion, and I think I presented the case well, that it would be in Troutdale's interest to be part of the, the regional consortium.
Well, you might have, you might have partially blunted his opposition.
I, I like to think of it that way, yes. That same day, I drove to Tacoma to attend the Pacific Northwest AWWA conference that was a, a very good training session for me. I, I went to a number of the, the technical presentations, and a couple that were presented by TBWD staff, and was very impressed with the work being done, and the latest in, in a number of different projects. I attended the board work session we had on May 1, where we discussed our branding initiative, as well as bonded debt and other financial long-range planning, and then tonight's executive session and board meeting. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Duggan. Commissioner Don, you know, the earphones, I know, help you hear the meeting better?
Yes.
But I think you're actually listening to Led Zeppelin.
Not that I know of.
Not that I know of. Sometimes things get so muddled that it could be. No, actually, this is a godsend.
You got your mic on?
Oh, I can hear myself fine, I'm sorry. Okay, on the 23rd of April, I attended a supply meeting, a meeting on supply. I too went to the Pacific Northwest AWWA meeting in Tacoma, and went an extra day to learn more about emergency management. And on the 30th of April, I attended a WIF meeting, and that's the Willamette Intake Facilities, and we had our first meeting, and this is a consortium sort of thing with a, a whole bunch of people who are part owners of the intake facility. The work session on May 1st, I went to the Alua Business Association on the 10th of May, and then tonight's meeting.
Very good. And with regard to WIF, I think it's always worth pointing out that WIF is part of a system of organizations that was crafted primarily by our staff to enable the management of our asset down in Wilsonville, in a way that's fair to everybody. And the staff has done a wonderful job in terms of putting the various organs together, such as the WIF. And I know that we'll be hearing more about that in the future, but we're glad that you're serving on it, and we're glad that you were able to architect it.
You know, speaking of staff, I attended probably a dozen work sessions in Tacoma, and I come away from those things, listening to other water districts tell us what they're doing, with this incredible, you know, wonderful feeling that we are so far ahead of everybody else in risk management and our technology. I ask a question to one of the presenters who presented this great reason for replacing a pipeline, and I said, are you, are they going to replace it? Well, we don't know. And I thought, you know, you did this whole study, it wasn't our group, it was a different, different system, but I'm just amazed. It's like, you know, we want to be, what you want to do is say to people, to say to other districts, we know what we're doing, follow us, and, you know, too bad they don't all do it, but some of them do. But I just was, was absolutely blown away at that we're a quantum leap ahead of anybody else.
Quantum leap?
Quantum leap?
I hope we don't have one now, go ahead.
Anyway, we're good, or they're good. We just, we just go along in the wake.
Very good, well, thank you very much. Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes, I also attended the water supply meeting with Commissioner Doan on the 23rd, and the Willamette Intake Facility initial board meeting on the 30th, and the work session on the 1st, and today's, tonight's board meeting.
Commissioner Bagnall?
Well, I missed the April board meeting due to other obligations, but, so, my list is longer than it normally would be, and goes back further than it normally would. I attended the Westside Economic Alliance State-of-the-County meeting on the 22nd of March, and that's always fraught with interest, especially since Chair Dyke is retiring now, and will soon be replaced. On the 2nd of April, I attended the joint meeting with TVWD and West Slope. We discussed future rate issues and operational issues. On the 3rd of April, I attended the TVWD work session, where we talked about the customer information system and the changes that are coming in that, and also the PERS system, possibilities with new side account funding that has come out of the legislature most recently. On the 1st of May, the TVWD work session, of course, where we had the branding update and the financial plan and revenue bond program that we're looking at. The 8th of May, I had the agenda planning meeting with our CEO and with President Burke, and then, of course, tonight, the regular board meeting.
Thank you. I have four meetings to report. A meeting of the Oregon Taxpayer Coalition on the 20th of April, where we discussed outcomes relating to the short session. The agenda breakfast that Commissioner Bagnall mentioned. I also attended, on behalf of the TVD, the Willamette River Water Coalition meeting, and then tonight's meeting. So those are the meetings that I had. So did anyone have a commissioner topic for tonight? Okay, that being the case, we would go to public comment, but I don't see any members of the public here, and I have no blue sheets in front of me, so we will go to the consent agenda. These items are considered to be routine and may be enacted in one motion. Any board member can ask that any of these items be separated. We have several items on the consent agenda, including the April 18th, 2018 regular meeting minutes. Yes?
So, do I need to request that we separate them, because I did not attend the April 18th meeting?
That's not necessary for this. If you want to, we can, but it's not necessary. Okay. So, the second item is the May 1st, 2018 work session minutes, where I was not present. So, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Some.
Okay, Dick was a little faster in the draw, but we'll, we'll give the second to Commissioner Doan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Consent agenda is adopted. And that brings us to the business agenda portion of the meeting, where we will consider adopting Resolution Number 1818, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between Washington County and Twelton Valley Water District and the City of Hillsborough for the Willamette Water Supply Program, joint construction of Roy Rogers Road, Beef Bend to Shoals Ferry, and PLM 5.1 Shoals Area Pipeline Projects. So we will begin with the staff report.
So, we continue to provide updates in terms of our working relationship with Washington County, and this is just one more of the many partnership agreements that we've presented for your consideration over the last couple of years. And so I'll turn it over to Dave and talk about this, this particular agreement.
Mark, and again, the commissioners? So, this resolution is dealing with PLM 5.1. I think it's always good to figure out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Figure out where we are in the world. So PLM 5 is kind of in the middle of the whole program there. It occurs on Shoals Ferry Road, tile flat, Graborn, around Clark Hill, and on Farmington Road. Zooming into that part of the program, PLM 5.1 is the southernmost portion of the PLM 5 project that is on Roy Rogers Road, going up to Shoals Ferry Road. There it is. And there's an Exhibit 1 on the IGA that's included in your packet, that shows what PLM 5.1 looks like on an aerial. So, it's, it's about 2,500 feet south of Bull Mountain Road, along Roy Rogers Road, and that's right to the urban growth boundary, and it goes up to Shoals Ferry Road to about 400 feet west along Shoals Ferry Road. The, the reasons for the limits of that, of the project, is that it aligns with Washington County's Roy Rogers Road project, which is an expansion of that road in that area. So, a little bit of background on this project and our partnership with Washington County, is that this has been in the works, frankly, for, for a couple of years now, in our coordination with Washington County on these projects. This particular project's about 7,000 feet of our 66-inch pipeline, and it's one of three segments that's part of a memorandum, memorandum of, of understanding that we have with Washington County. This was first brought to you in October of 2016, in this memorandum of understanding, and the PLM 5.1 is the first of the projects to be constructed under that MOU. So, these, so, there are some key provisions that I wanted to refresh your memory of. These were presented back in October of 2016. And one of the, this, this first one is kind of one of the most important, that in lieu of performing road and surface restoration, WWSP will pay Washington County anticipated costs for trench restoration. So what that means is that if we were to do this project on our own, we would have to cut through the road's surface, dig the trenches, build our pipeline, restore the trenches, restore a lot of the roadway as we're damaging it through our construction activities. So rather than doing that, and by forming this partnership with Washington County, we're saving quite a bit of money, but we're also paying that to Washington County to afford them to do other projects that benefit us, in terms of the coordination of our work with theirs. Washington County will pool these funds that, that we pay toward opportunity projects as outlined in the MOU. And Washington County will direct staff to account for our pipeline and future projects, and we'll have to enter into separate IGAs for each of its projects, for both design and construction. And this is the first construction IGA that we have under this MOU. So there's a lot of benefits that, that we derive from this partnership, potential design and construction cost savings by part, by combining our projects, a reduced impact to the community, so they're expanding the roadway, rebuilding our pipeline at the same time, as opposed to having two construction projects in the same area. We have a higher degree of route certainty, which is very important to us, to know that we can construct our pipeline in the areas where we want to. And a lot of risk sharing between the two, the two agencies, traffic control, outreach, and, and construction as well. So, a summary of the IGA that's in your packet is that it defines county-specific, WWSP-specific, and joint construction obligations. Basically, we had to define the work that's occurring, figure out who's responsible for what, and what we're responsible to together for, for the duration of the project. It defines the term of the agreement for four years. And you might acknowledge that that doesn't align with our program duration, our program goes to 2026, four years is short of that, but this IGA is just for the construction of this pipeline, which will certainly be done within that four-year time span. And it defines the costs. Now, these are the shared costs as part of the MOU. It's not the actual construction cost, but just what costs are, are relevant to this, to this IGA, actually. And first is this partnering MOU contribution. So as part of that, that road restoration costs that I was, that I was talking about earlier, and how we're paying that to Washington County, and they're pooling it to do other projects that are a benefit to us, our payment under this IGA is $1.25 million. So that's the money that goes to them, that they, that they hold and do roadway projects that are of benefit to us. There's Washington County construction administration costs. This is a Washington County-led projects, and, and so they'll do the construction administration, and we're paying our share of those costs, which is $300,000, which is a negotiated amount. The next three costs, the shared cost for our design changes, our temporary construction-related costs, and mobilization, are all currently engineers' estimates based on the design that was completed. So these are, all these numbers there, the, that are shown up here in this graphic, are our current estimates, and these will all be trued up and refined once we have the bids from the contractors, and we'll work that out with Washington County. One last thing is that we're going to have at least one, maybe two additional construction IGAs under this MOU, and this particular IGA will serve as a model to that, and we, we worked pretty hard to create it so that it could serve in that, as that purpose. And so with that, I won't read this whole thing, but recommend consideration of adopting this resolution, and be glad to take any questions you might have about it.
Any questions for Mr. Crasko? Okay. Then do I have a motion to, a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number 1818?
Yeah, okay, that says 1018.
That's, that's, I think that's my personal clerical error, sorry about that.
Yeah, 1018, yeah. On the agenda, we have, so 1818 is correct. Okay. So, I'll take, I'll entertain a motion to adopt Resolution Number 1818.
Mr. Chair, I so moved that we adopt Resolution 18-18, so that a very appropriate IGA can be put in place.
Excellent. And do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Commissioner Duggan moves, Commissioner Bagnall seconds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Okay, the motion passes. And there being no further business before the Board of Commissioners, this meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you, everyone, and have a good night.